Good evening. My name is Jerry Cochran and I'd like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all those in attendance this evening and ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Rosa Torres.
Present.
Mitchell Moffett.
Present.
Paul Mendez, excused. Kim Lerman.
Present.
Abel Campos.
Present.
Dana Crutchfield.
Present.
Rachel Teal.
Present.
Jay Handler.
Present.
And Jerry Cochran.
Present.
Mr. Chair, we have eight members present. We do have a form.
The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by the city council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to city council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and the development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on the community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I'd like to remind the audience, tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on Charter Cable, PSC, channel 191, and it will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. This meeting is also being recorded, so you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. You click on the video on demand link and make your selection of the meeting there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available on the back table, so you may want to follow along in the meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to silence your cell phones and devices to prevent interruptions during the meeting. For those present this evening, when you're given the opportunity to address the commission, please come to the podium, speak clearly into the microphone, and provide us your name and city of address for our records. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington state law requires public meetings like this one being held this evening not only to be fair but also appear to be fair. In addition, Washington state law prohibits the Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which the member may have a direct interest or may be either benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. Any objection to Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time or it'll be waived. So first, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any of the items on the agenda? It should be noted that I am a Board of Directors member for Domestic Violence Services, one of the grant applicants. Second, is there anyone in the audience this evening that would object to any Planning Commission member hearing any of the items on the agenda? Look, the records show there were no declarations. We as a Planning Commission need and value your input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to make better recommendations to city council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at the Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get your facts and opinions placed into the official record the city council will use to make its decision. I encourage you to take full advantage of the opportunity. The first item on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes. These minutes were mailed out and were provided to commissioners ahead of time. I trust and hope you have the opportunity to take a look, and I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes or else discussion. I so move.
Seconded.
All right, it's been moved by Commissioner Handler, seconded by Commissioner Lerman, to approve the Pasco Planning Commission meeting minutes for Thursday, June 20th, 2024. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Great, then a motion has passed unanimously. All right, on the agenda tonight, we don't have any old business, so we'll move right into the public hearing portion. And the first item, or the only item on the public hearing agenda, is the 2025 Community Development Block Grant Program allocation, which is MFBGAP 2024-003, and I believe we'll turn it over to Ms. Webb.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I wanted to remind you tonight what the intent of the Community Development Block Grant Program is. It provides annual grants on a formula basis to state, cities, and counties to develop viable urban communities by providing decent housing, suitable living environment, and by expanding economic opportunities principally for low to moderate income persons. These are the goals, council goals, for 2022, 2023. They are quality of life, financial sustainability, community transportation network, community safety, economic viability, community identity. So these goals were numbered one through six, and if the applicant met one of the council goals, they were given a one. If they met two of the council goals, they were given a two, and then so on. These are the Tri-Cities Consortium Consolidated Plan Goals for 2020 through 2024. Increase and preserve affordable housing, community, neighborhood, and economic development, homeless interventions, and public services. Just like the council goals, these were numbered one through three, and if the application met one of the goals, they were given a one, and if they met two of the goals, they were given a two, and so on. This goal for CDBG HUD regulations and national objective is to develop viable urban communities by providing decent housing, suitable living environment, and by expanding economic opportunities principally for low to moderate income persons. CDBG program requires that each activity funded except for program administration must meet a national objective. An activity that doesn't meet a national objective is not compliant with CDBG regulations and may be subject to remedial actions, which would be the City of Pasco, as the city is the grantee. So for 2023, these are the percentages for each goal that was allocated to comply with the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan. So housing was allocated at 32% of the entitlement allocation, public service 13%, economic opportunities is 16%, and of course, section 108 was allocated for 39%. So for 2024, these are the percentages for each goal that was allocated to comply with the consolidated plan as well. Housing was allocated at 35%, public service 9%, economic opportunities was 13%, and the section 108 was 43%. This slide shows the total CDBG fund allocations for the Tri-Cities Consolidated Plan Goals for 2020 through 2024 with the totals and percentages. Public services at 9% with 375, and the goal was $450,000 for the five years. Section 108, the debt payment is at 21%, and this was not included in the consolidated plan as the City of Pasco had not received this debt payment as of that time. Housing is at 20% with $875,000. The goal was $551,000, and economic opportunities is at $50,000 with $2,119,000, and the goal was $1,798,000. We had anticipated in the consolidated plan of receiving $3,332,000 in the five years with entitlement and program income. Thus, over the five years, we expended $3,701,000. Staff identified a criteria to align with the council goals, the Tri-Cities Consortium Consolidated Plan, partial funding possibilities for projects, and whether the applicant's projects met the intent of the CDBG HUD regulations and national objectives. The applicants were given a grade from A to C based on how many goals their project met the criteria. Scores from 1 to 4 received a C, 5 to 9 received a B, and anything above 10 received an A. These are the 2025 CDBG projects and scores, which is the first column based on the criteria that I just explained. The next column is the amount requested, and the third column is the average of funds that the applicant has received over the last five years. So staff decided to come up with two different options for you tonight. This is option one, which funded a portion for all activities except for one which staff felt that the HomeARP funding would be more suitable for that application. We wanted to remind the commission that with only $677,000 available, and after you take out the admin and section 108, that only left $292,540 available to fund. So to make it easier to understand, next to the highlighted column is a column named "Activity," where each application falls into one of the consolidated goals, and the non-CDBG funding is leveraged funding to match what funds the applicant is requesting, which doesn't equate into the rubric as we looked at the budget in the application. The next slide is option two. The staff committee removed the activities that received a grade of C, and funds were distributed between the Bs that were there. So that's it. If you guys have any questions?
Great, we'll open it up to the commissioners to ask questions of Ms. Webb. To start with anyone? And I know you guys covered this in depth last month, and I like the options, and it looks like, and I think we did this last year too, where we presented those options by score and things like that. So that's great. Any questions? Go ahead.
So, and, forgive me, I don't have my reading glasses, but I did mark this up quite well. The 225 local CDGBG improvements, improvements, see what I'm talking about there? How come that has a high risk?
So that's from the Housing Authority? Is that the one that you're talking about?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we have a risk assessment that we have to do. The Housing Authority has not applied with City of Pasco for over 10 years, so that right there already gives them a higher score. Then we go down based on, do they have a clean audit? Do, you know, are the, is the staff that is going to be administering this funds, are they new? Have they had any findings over the last couple of years, so it actually has a score? And then it comes up, and that's how they're assessed.
Okay, and then, on the column that says "non-CDBG match," might understand that right, that that is a column saying that they're, they have matching funds that will up to that amount?
Correct.
So, when we're giving to those that have matching funds, we're actually getting $2 for the price of one, right?
Correct.
And these, and these that don't have any matching, we're, we're, is a dollar for a dollar. So we're actually saving money if we give more to those that have matching funds, correct?
Not necessarily.
We're getting more for our money.
Yeah, but not necessarily. So in the applications that you all received last meeting, we actually look at the complete budget, and the budget tells us what other sources they have of funding, and if they do or don't.
Their complete budget?
Yes, yes, and it was in the applications that you guys received.
So they could say they have matching funds, and you're saying that they may not?
Correct.
Oh, I see.
And it's also the case in some of the city-based ones and things like debt repayment, it's irrelevant, right?
Correct.
Can you clarify your last statement? Like, an example? You don't have to give example of which applicant, but if you can help us understand that more, them saying that they have matching funds, and then you determining they do not?
Yeah, so we could have an applicant that was applying for $30,000, and they could say they have matching funds of $30,000. And then we look at their budget, and the budget only has the $30,000 that they're requesting. So we have no idea what the other matching funds are. Whereas some applicants will actually say, we receive other grants, we, you know, have other funding that we receive, donations, stuff like that. So we have to go by what's in their budget.
So in their current application, there's not a request for them to prove if they have matching funds?
No, there's not.
Okay.
And some of the grants that nonprofits get, they can be designated for a purpose that matches what they're asking for here, and then they can take those funds and use them as matching, which is pretty common.
Yeah, so, not to be a dead horse, but with the matching funds, it's not necessarily that they would have, if they're going to match the funds that we give them, right? It's just that they have other funding, some from other sources.
Correct.
And, and those are not contingent on them getting block grant money?
No, it's not.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions online, Commissioner Teal or Campos?
No questions.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Campos. I just, one question. I know that you had said for option two, you removed the C, but what was the process as far as the thinking, as far as like, that money that was allocated to those are now put in the pot, and now, was it spread out? It looks like it went more to Peanuts Park than anything. Is that, did it just go off to there, or was there more? Did it spread out more from that?
I think you need to repeat it. Do you need him to repeat that?
I think I understand what he's trying to say. So after we removed the Cs, we kind of went through and said, like, okay, I'll take like the facade project, for instance. So originally, they would have only gotten, well, they, never mind, the facade's not a good one. Okay, so let's do PSK. So they had originally asked for $35,000, and in the option one, we were only going to give them 12 because they were a B. And when we reallocated the funds that we were taking from the Cs, we bumped them up 3,000 to where they were almost getting half of what they were requesting. Does that help you, Commissioner Campos?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Okay.
And Commissioner Teal, did you say no questions, or you had a question?
No questions for me. Thanks for going through this.
Thank you. Go ahead.
And another question. So I didn't, I didn't figure this out for option two. I just grabbed option one because I was kind of curious. Is there any, for lack of a better term, forgive me, rhyme or reason why some people are getting, or some organizations are getting 74%, some are getting 12%, some are getting, you know, in between. The lowest is 12%, the highest is 74% of what they're asking. Do you take that into consideration, or do you even look at that?
So when we decided to do it this way, where we were giving them a grade, we basically came up with a dollar amount. So like for As, we're going to get $60,000. As you can see, on code enforcement, we did $70,000, only because in the past, we had paid for one and a half of their officers, and $70,000 would be enough to pay for one officer. The other two actually did receive the $60,000. Then we went through, and so for Bs, they were going to get $25,000. Cs were going to get $15,000, which then, of course, would have added up to $100,000. When we came up with the number and gave everybody what we said they could get, we were over. So then we just broke it down and kind of figured out which ones would be, you know, Bs. How would we do that if we gave them half the money? You know, if we give them a portion of the money?
Okay, understand. So was, so you didn't look at the percentage of what they were asking, you looked at a dollar amount assigned to a category, and then divvied that up?
Correct, correct.
Understand.
And is it correct to say also that the criteria of objectives and risks and priorities are also determined a bit by the program in HUD?
Correct. And as I mentioned before at the last meeting, HUD is very pushing us to go back to housing, which was actually the intent of the funding, so.
Thank you. Any more questions from the commissioners?
One more, sorry.
Go ahead.
So, so with what you just said, is it option one or option two that pushes more money towards HUD's request of more housing?
Well, option one would be the one that matches more of housing.
Commissioner Torres?
Yeah. So a quick question on the options. So do we have, I understand what the difference between the two are, but do we have any leeway, I guess, to recommend, like, say for example, on option two, you know, if we agree with most of it, except for maybe a couple of things that we can point out, and then call those out as part of our recommendation?
Oh, of course, yes, yes. And that's even in the staff report. You can go with either one that we picked, or you could say, come back next month, or you could say, we want to go with option two with these changes. Option one with these changes, it's up to you.
Yeah, and you can, for example, you could make a motion as a member after the discussion of public hearing to say, I want option two with this modification, and if you get a second and you get votes, you can do that. Or you can say, hey, we're not satisfied, go back another month. I think we're already behind on this though, aren't we, for this year?
No, not.
A timing good?
Yes, we're.
Okay, okay, that was last year. All right, any other questions from the commissioners? Before I open it up for the public hearing? Okay, hearing done. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If you're here to speak on any of these or the overall program, please come forward and give us your name and city of address, whether applicant or otherwise. So go ahead, come on in. Just turn the red light on there, and you'll be good. Uh-oh, the red light not working? The bottom of the mic, the mic stand? There you go.
There we go. Rob Wilkinson, I'm with the YMCA. My address is 3910 Road 104. We're very thankful for the opportunity to apply on an annual basis, and certainly appreciative for the amounts that we do receive. We've requested $30,000 this year. I believe last year, we received $20,000. And if I remember correctly, in the two options, I think the highest amount we received was $12,600, is that right? $12,500? Yeah. Excuse me. With that being said, as you know, the Pasco YMCA is located in the Martin Luther King Center over at East Pasco, and we serve the residents in that community. And we also offer soccer programs on an annual basis. And we're able to keep those rates affordable by getting additional funding such as from the CDBG funds. So a cut would not allow us, but would force us to take a look at our budget and possibly have to increase either program fees or membership fees or both. So I just want you to consider that. Thank you.
Quick question.
Sure.
Can you remind us how many soccer players or how many community members you serve?
The soccer players were about 400 plus per season, which is four quarters, about 1,500 to 1,600 kids playing soccer. And then through the center, we serve roughly about another 1,500 that come in on annual basis.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Let me turn it off.
All right, anyone else that wants to speak to these items or any of these items individually? Come on up. Go ahead and press the red button down. No, the one on the bottom of the mic stand. Mic stand? The guy talking on the bottom of the base, the base of the mic. There you go.
Thank you. So, thank you. My name is Ruvina Jimenez, and I work with the League of Education Voters, and I'm one of the mentors for the ALAS, Ambassadors of Lakeview Achieving Success. And I would like to thank you for the opportunity to apply for a grant again. And basically, the students that we work with are low-income students that live at the Lakeview Mobile Home Park. And I've been working with these students for over 10 years now, since I've been working for the League of Education Voters. And the students that we're working with are, they're victims of COVID. You know, they lost two years of working with guidance counselors and actually being in school and, you know, working in an in-school setting. And basically, we're just trying to motivate them to try to figure out what they would like to do for a career, and trying to ignite a spark in them to try to figure out what it is that they would like to do once they graduate from high school, and just inspire them to be active participants in their community, and get them to where they need to go, and, you know, broaden their horizon. And, you know, this gives us an opportunity to do that without having to literally take them from store to store asking for donations from community, like Fiesta Foods. Like, we still do that as much as we can, so that we can try to make the dollars stretch. But, you know, anything that we could do, like this year, we actually participated in the parade, the Fourth of July Parade, and to hear one of the students that was actually born in the Tri-Cities to say that she had never been to the Fourth of July Parade before, and that she didn't even know it existed, was kind of remarkable to me. And when city council person had asked me once before, you know, how do we get our Hispanic population to acclimate? And it just hit me that this is one of the ways that we do it, is by getting the kids involved in our city activities that we have, you know, and this is what this program is doing. And so I would just like to say thank you for this opportunity to be able to serve these kids.
Thank you for being here. Any questions for the applicant?
How many kids do you serve?
So, right, there's over 300 students that live at Lakeview Mobile Home Park, and right now, we hit our target for this year already, and we're looking, so the students that are actually participating in the ALAS group right now, we've hit 30 students, but they in turn do community projects to serve all the kids that live at the Lakeview Mobile Home Park.
I understand. And then which line is she on there?
It's the League of Education Voters.
Six, thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak tonight? On this item? All right, one more call. Anyone else would like to speak on this agenda item in the public hearing? Okay, hearing done. We will close the public hearing, and I'll open it up to the commissioners one last time for any other questions or clarifications to the staff.
I do have a question. I know last year, when we went through the CDBG funds, it seemed like it was a collective value to not have city staff paid for their salary through these funds. And both of these options show that, and I'm going to go ahead and take off the, the City of Pasco Community Economic Development, number one. That sounds like that's directly tied to this grant. But our code enforcement officers, we talked about this last year, worried about what it says here, financial stability. So if we're trying to make sure that our city funding, our grant funding is stable for these employees, that their income is based off of a grant, that concerns me right there. And that's one of the city goals, is financial stability. And so my question back to you guys is, how come they're still on there?
Yeah, I can answer that, Commissioner. And certainly, staff understands and acknowledges the question raised. I think where we recommend, at least in both of these options, funding support for the code enforcement, but in particularly related to our rental inspection program, staff's, the staff recommendation is based on the, on having availability of housing stock that remains in a good state and healthy, habitual format, and preventing and decreasing the opportunities for our increasing housing stock to kind of fall into states of disrepair. And when they fall into those states, it makes it more difficult for folks to live in safe, in safe housing. We certainly acknowledge and will pass on the recommendation from the Planning Commission as it's worded, along with the notes associated with this meeting. It's a challenge, not only for the city, but certainly with all the other applicants, with the need being more than the available resources.
And I don't think, and I'll speak for myself, but trying to recall from last year's conversations, that no one talked about that those employees are not incredibly valuable and needed. It's more of just where the responsibility lies as far as providing the income for their salaries.
Yeah, great point. I think also, I think. Yeah, great point. Uh, I think also, I think it goes also back to what you said, with HUD pushing so much of the priority to housing, this is a housing impact. That's probably part of the question, but I totally agree, you gotta get the city to fund these so they're not laid off in a grant, when the grant goes away.
And one thing I wanted to mention, um, uh, since, uh, funding this position, uh, they have actually helped. Bring applicants to me to apply for rehab projects, um, so in the. Years that I have been in this position, uh, we have done almost thirty projects in just the three years.
Other questions or feedback for staff?
And I'd just like to mention something on the code enforcement side, so, um, being retired police officer, uh, code enforcement, when they, then they talk about. Abating, abating houses that are, um, basically, we called them shooting galleries where people are doing drugs and things and. And keeping the stock up, like you said, Jacob, of, of housing to not get more dilapidated, I understand. Why, why it's on here, uh, and I do see there's absolutely a need and is. Code enforcement has been here before and talked about how really shorthanded they are, it's just amazing they can actually do their job at all from what, the way they're. Uh, manned, so, um, while I agree that it should be tried to get funding somewhere else, not the CDBG. There's gotta be other grants out there where they can get that are not, that don't fall under this, so maybe whomever. And I'm not sure who this is, but I'm sure the city has a grant writer, maybe a couple, whomever that is needs to look more focused on. Supplying the, the right manpower for, um, code enforcement, because they definitely, I mean, really, they need to leave. They probably need to triple their man, their manning, but, you know, so I know they're way, way understaffed for what they do.
Thanks, yeah, sounds like our last year's recommendation after we approved these with the recommendation to the city find other money goes this year too. Um, any other questions or feedback? Go ahead, Commissioner Crutchfield.
Yes, um, I'm talking about the code enforcement again. I don't know how you go about finding other. Monies to help fund this, I wouldn't know, but in my opinion, those items are very important on this list. Especially with the push for increased housing and, um. For all, um, we need to make sure that it is, um, well-kept. For all the people that are living there as well as the surrounding neighborhoods, because. This is our community, we want it to shine, and I think those are two very important areas. So that's what I have to say about that, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
This is Commissioner Lerman. Looking at line item eleven ADA improvements for playground equipment. Um, they asked for a hundred thousand, they received twelve thousand, um. Have you got a sense of what can be accomplished with twelve thousand dollars to improve those play, the playground? Are they able to do it in phases?
Yeah, I don't, we don't have a specific, uh, uh, I guess that what twelve thousand dollars would, um. Assist with, with respects to that particular project, I think the idea was trying to provide as much funding as we could with. Um, essentially limited supply, it's kind of this, the story of this e- every single year, and I think one thing I would add. Um, uh, just for, uh, staff is if there's a different mechanism in which you would like. Or prefer for staff to present this information or the various options, so, um, decisions, uh, or, uh, or. Questions could be raised differently, uh, we're certainly open to feedback, um, so that we can present this or provide information differently. Uh, because we want to make this a collaborative process, but essentially, um, i- it, it's kind of the same story every year and it's a difficult one. Given that every single one of these applications is very much, um, in need, um, but staff certainly is open to recommendations and, and direction. From the planning commission to make this process, um, uh, easier for everyone involved.
Thank you, and then a second question, um, as well, um, how many. Pasco community members could possibly be served for the ADA improvements? Is there a way to quantify that?
This is with respect to the playground?
Yes.
Um, we don't know yet because it's not in place, but we certainly have enough, um, information to be able to go out and conduct surveys. And based on usage of our parks and recreational facilities.
Yeah, I'm thinking of like Chihuahua Park, how there's the opportunity there for the last seven whatever plus years and how well-used it is. Okay, thank you.
All right.
I just have one more question.
Go ahead.
I think, um, what you just, uh, said, Jacob, um, kind of sparked an idea. I think in the applications, there was something. Um, one of the questions was like, what was the minimum, well, I guess what I would say is, let me take that back, um. I think there was something similar that was on the applications, um, but maybe what would be helpful in the future when we look at this is to maybe have a column. That also says like, what's the minimum that each, um, agency could use, um, because if. If we give them, you know, say, for example, ten thousand dollars, but that's not gonna really do anything for them, or they're not gonna be able to use it, then we would know that. Or at least know what's, what would be like a good quantity of, um, that, that would actually be helpful for them.
I can kind of think of like, um, two different ways to add, um. How to come up with allocation of funds, um, a minimum, I think that's excellent idea, good job, um, Commissioner Torres. Um, but as well as like, per person or some of these projects or per project, per like inclusive. Um, projects such as like the, uh, ADA improvements where per person might be such as, um. Uh, legal women voters, because, um, you know, that's about forty bucks, um, a kid, a student being served, um. Where the YMCA, you got, um, three thousand, um, students being served for the same amount of money. You know, so maybe considering per person cost of how that is divided up, maybe possibly another category too.
Commissioner Crutchfield, did you have something to say, or Mike just left on? Awesome, no worries. All right, um, any other questions or feedback? I know, um, just so you know, um, since we have a great quorum. I'll be recusing myself from voting because I think that's best, because option one would definitely be worse for me than option two for my org, so it's better if I don't vote at all. So, um, we have a great quorum, so I don't need to vote, so, but I think right now, unless you have more feedback, um, there's a couple of things. You could, we could entertain a motion for a flat option one or two, or you could entertain a motion for a modified. Option one or two with, and you can make those modifications however you want, or we can entertain a motion that you need more time and to come back next month. So it's really up to the commissioners what you'd like to do next.
Quick question, how much time do we have, um, to make a decision?
This has to be approved before the end of the year, which has to give us enough time to take it to council.
Okay, anyone?
I, I have a question. So you, you said we have till the end of the year for this.
It has to be approved before December thirty-first, but they has to give us enough time.
Probably need to take it to council by November.
By November.
Last year, we took it to council in November.
Okay, so this is a lot of information and a lot of, um, different. Applicants that all are pretty important, I think, and, um, whether it's the City of Pasco. Code enforcement, definitely, um, the YMCA, I mean, I, domestic violence, I mean. It's hard for me to make a recommendation on one or two at this point without maybe further. Thinking about how to move the numbers or.
Commission, if, if I may ask, is there any, if, if there is a potential recommendation to continue the, uh, the hearing. Oh, you already closed your, we'll continue the, the motion to another date, um, is there anything staff could do to assist with that decision-making?
That was gonna be my question to you. From, from the feedback that you've received, can you think of anything else that would assist? Us in our decision? One idea might be to come back with some of the recommendations, like the number of people served and, um, making, I mean. I think you are making the score based on the HUD criteria, which is the right way to do this, right? We should be doing it by the. Source of the funds and what their criteria is, but, um, adding the number of people served could help and, um, on each of these or. Um, you know, some other based on what we've talked about, but I think in, the other way to look at this is that. The staff has made recommendations based on the criteria that HUD provides, and they've ranked them by the criteria that HUD provides, and so. Um, unless we have additional criteria that we'd like to suggest and make the decision on, um, it's hard for staff to come back with. Just the same thing next month, right, so.
Yeah, I think, um, not necessarily a motion, but I think maybe a suggestion if we still have time. To keep considering this is to maybe add in, um, what we spoke about, you know, what would be. You know, a minimum amount that would be useful to the, to the different organizations, um, I think it's difficult to quantify. You know, impact across, um, the, the different applicants, just because they're all serving different needs and so. You know, it would be, you, they're not, you'd be, we'd be comparing apples to oranges, I think, um, in consideration to what impact they. They would do, um, so to me, I think it just would be more important to figure out like, if the amount that we're giving to them is gonna be useful. You know, uh, for example, like, even the code enforcement, right, if we decided to cut that to thirty-five thousand, that's not gonna do anything for them because. You can't pay for half of a person, right? So, maybe something like that would be helpful, and then, I think what would also be helpful is to, I know we have them kind of grouped. By the, um, by the activity, but, um, like, for example, the public service. That's bound by a limit, right, so, um. You know, I, I think kind of chunking those pieces out would be easier and then having like a subtotal by the. By the different activities.
Okay, and on the, and also on the bottom, it actually does say what the caps are.
Yeah.
Um, and so then we kind of break it down as to how much we were giving for the public service, um, and then how much was going to admin, so. Those are the only two that have a cap, the other ones don't, so we could give, we could give one person a dollar and the other person. A hundred thousand dollars, so it, it doesn't fall into that cap.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, it's an interesting point, because sometimes I think to the point is peanut buttering the money across actually may not do as much good as actually. Chunking it up, like, the, a good example is if they wanted a hundred thousand dollars for playground equipment, are they just gonna buy a slide for ten thousand? Or, you know, what, what is that gonna actually do for us, or is it, hey, with ten thousand, we can completely rebarc all the playground, I, I don't know, just as an example. Knowing that they could make good use of the money that they are getting versus, hey, you're just getting a peanut butter spread. And you may not be able to do what you really set out to do here. If that makes sense, but I know that's hard because I don't know if the applications specify that, or if it's just going back to the applicants and saying, hey. You know, our draft proposal has you getting this much, how would you spend that and would that be spent effectively? I don't even know if that's allowed, so I. It's just really how, how you navigate that is maybe hard, so. I also think the number of people served is helpful, a helpful criteria for us too, just to say, hey, we think this will impact. But it, some of these are hard measurements to know how many people are gonna be served, so.
And that's why I'm sharing per person or per project, so two, two categories there. I do wanna say, um. Kristin, uh, you and your team are always doing a fantastic job of taking in our input, um, being very responsive and, um. Coming up with anything from the rubric last year to, you know, just greater amount of transparency, which serves, um, not only us well and understanding. But also the applicants, um, coming forward from the community to be able to, um, navigate those waters, um, in the future years as well. Along with our community, and so, um, thank you for the hard work you do, and, um, we're, we're just trying to process and help team with you. So, thank you. For me, I feel like I'm not ready yet to vote on option one or two, I would like, um, much like last year where we saw an option three. Did take out the, um, city employees', um, salaries out of the third option. It's not a motion, I'm just discussing.
Yeah, I guess, question for you, would you, would you like us just to continue this to another public hearing in August, or would you like us to make a motion for that?
So, the public hearing's closed, so you would just make a motion to continue this until the next meeting to make your recommendation to council?
So we do it in the form of a workshop or old business or?
Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah, we would just have to advertise it again and then, um, yeah, it would just be under old business, so.
But we wouldn't open it to public hearing, obviously.
I'm sorry, what?
You said you didn't want, we, since the public hearings closed, we wouldn't reopen another public hearing?
No.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
We've gotten all the public comments.
That makes sense, okay.
So, Mr. Moff, here, I wanted to, um, say thank you for those pie charts, by the way, because I really like those. I'm not because they're pie charts, but the information that was on them, um, so. Because, as, as I wrote up, scribbled all over my, my thing and, and wrote it up, I, I divided them out by, by, um. Your pie chart, basically, but I just didn't do a pie chart. So let me get this straight, if you say, um, what was one of the, one of the categories, economics, right, or something like that? Housing and economics, right, let's see, let's do public service, so, that's a better one, thank you, public service. If you decided on your pie chart, you got so much percentage for each section, if you decided, there. HUD doesn't tell you that what percentage goes where, right? You could do zero percent on one of them, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, no.
On, on specific ones, on some you couldn't.
No, so when we do our consolidated plan, which we're going to start for twenty twenty-five. Um, because this is the consolidated plan that was from twenty to twenty-four, when we do that, we say. How much are we gonna try to spend for the next five years on this proj, on housing, on public services, on economic development? So we take the last year, so like when we do it for twenty twenty-five, the amount that we get for twenty twenty-four. We will multiply that by five and say, we get this much at the end of the, at the end of the five years, how are we gonna spread that out? What projects are we gonna try to do? Are we gonna, you know, try to do fifteen rehabs? Are we gonna try to do? Two community infrastructure projects, so we kind of have to put that in our plan.
I understand.
So for twenty twenty-five, I don't know what we're gonna do because we're barely gonna start getting the process of. Having meetings with agencies that benefit from this money and get their idea of what are the projects we should do. In the next five years, do we keep them as housing, public services and economic development? Or do we change it to something else?
I understand, and so the quicker we do this as a commission, does that help you for the next year? If we got it done quicker than later?
Um, it would, because we haven't started having the meetings with the agencies, uh, that's gonna start in September, so, but.
So if we had it done by September, that would be ideal for you, or sometime?
Correct, yes.
Understand, thank you.
Okay, so we're just gonna continue this August with some sort of workshop or old business, un, uh, other business or something?
I do have another question about public service, okay, so, um, fifty percent cap, which would be a hundred and one, um, hundred thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars. And so for option one, that's just forty-four K out of that.
The hundred.
Picture of.
Correct.
Bucket of money or whatever.
Yes, gotcha, okay, versus the twenty thousand five hundred and forty in option two, okay, all right, thank you.
All right, last call, anything on this, questions, feedback? If not, we will move on, uh, to workshop, thank you, Ms. Webb.
I do have one more item that I wanted to give you guys an update on, um, still within CDBG. Um, so as you guys know, uh, council had reallocated the money from the Louis Street Second and Fifth Project. To the small business. to the Small Business Relief Program to help any businesses that were impacted by the Louis Street construction. Uh, when they originally, um, had this before them, they had a map that they approved that was, you had to be within this impact zone. Then it was brought back to them with, these are the numbers we have so far, these are the people that have been denied. So they expanded the map to three ninety-seven to Second Street. So they did make it bigger. As of today, we have received twenty-one applications. The application process has closed, so no more applications can come in. Uh, we have received twenty-one applications, we have approved fourteen of them for a hundred and thirty thousand, four ninety-three, twenty-nine. Uh, we have five that are still missing documentation, but they do have time to get that into us. And two of them were denied because they still were not in the expanded geographical area.
That's great to hear. They took our recommendation, found some other money, and people are getting served. So thanks for that update. Anybody have questions or feedback on that?
Can you repeat the dollar amount again?
How much was approved so far? It was one hundred thirty thousand, four ninety-three, twenty-nine. And then we still have five applications that can still get money.
And what was the source of funds again? It wasn't, because we shift, they had to shift it out of CDBG.
Yeah, they shifted it from the Louis Street, second to fifth project, which was a CDBG project.
Oh.
That they had been, they had been given money over the last five, uh, five years. And so they were trying to build it up so that they could use it for that project.
Good. Thank you.
Given the amount of construction that's around and Pasco happening and some businesses being affected by, um, our, our needs here in Pasco, do you foresee that this may kind of application process happen again? Or because of the community there, that this is an isolated incident?
I, I'll attempt to try to answer that. I think certainly there's quite a bit of construction and there likely will continue to be construction as the city and this, this entire region grows at an extremely rapid pace. Um, I'm, I'm not sure I can answer, uh, the question with respects to will this be a program offered again? Or what the criteria will be used, uh, by the decision makers to, um, make the determination? I, I think what I can answer confidently is that staff is excited that we found a new way to utilize existing block grant dollars for, uh, supporting businesses in need. And so I think, um, there's a little bit of success and achievement in, um, in doing some research and finding other opportunities to use funding to support businesses.
Thank you.
Great to hear, thank you. All right, anything else on that or other items? Well, we can move on to workshop item, which is, uh, CA twenty twenty-four zero zero one, which is a return of our overnight truck habitation with some great progress on potential, um, code. So thanks, I'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening. I'm just gonna quick give a background because we have, uh, new staff. This process of, uh, drafting this amendment came before you guys in January. We had a city property owner and developer who, um, was approached about their property, by someone who wanted to put an overnight, I'm gonna call it truck parking lot on their property, which is different than anything that we have in our code, like a truck stop, because it would be the, the truck parking and overnight staying in the truck would be the, um, primary use of the property. So because our Title twenty-five doesn't have that use defined, uh, the applicant was told that, uh, they should bring, uh, initiate a text amendment to our, our municipal code. So we've workshopped this with you guys, um, I guess three workshops so far. This is the fourth. Our last workshop was in May where we said that we'd come back in July, uh, with a draft ordinance. And, uh, you guys have a copy of that, um, the ordinance language. But, um, what was included in the May, um, meeting is a chart that we were gonna fill out, so we've got that to go over. And I just also wanna let you guys know what staff has been doing, uh, in June when we were apart. So we did meet with the Washdot consultants who are focusing on the truck parking as part of the twenty twenty-four Transportation System Management Operations Plan. And they gave us some really good guidance. They, uh, pointed us to some, um, publications. They talked about their, uh, experiences interviewing truck drivers since, you know, we, we don't wanna write this code and not have it serve the people, uh, well that are gonna be using it. So, um, we took what you guys had directed us, um, on and also the specifics that were in some of these documents that we were, um, pointed to by Washdot. And we crafted the, the language. And we can go over this chart. But specifically, um, we're asking for your guidance on the definition of overnight truck parking and habitation. And, and, uh, also, um, the perimeter gates, perimeter fencing, um, requirements for, um, pri- primary versus accessory uses, um, number of things like trash receptacles and amenity requirements. Because we, um, gave all, uh, some details about what is considered an amenity. And, um, right now in the ordinance language, it leaves, um, a lot of what is considered one amenity up to the discretion of the director of Community Economic Development. And we wanna get away from, um, from decisions that are based on someone's discretion. So if you, obviously, we can't cover everything. There's gonna be situations where, um, if an applicant suggests an idea that we don't have in code, it's a good idea. It can be at somebody's discretion, but we try to, um, avoid that if possible. So I'm just gonna go over these two slides of the chart that we had last meeting. Gonna show you a map and then we can go through the specific ordinance language. Okay, so, right now, you guys had said that you didn't feel that, uh, truck parking would be, uh, appropriate in C-three, that it was only appropriate in the industrial zones. So we've got that covered, we have it prohibited in, uh, the commercial zones as a primary use. Right now, it's still, um, an accessory use because truck stops like Loves and, um, King City, they're in the C-three zone, they've got truck parking. So as permitted as an outright use, so no special permits. And, uh, this would allow for, um, I, I, I two and I three would all have the same requirements. The maximum permitted stay would be seventy-two hours, cause then people can rest. If they're ill, they can also rest, they can get, um, some other things done, they can pick up at, at their next job. So we figured seventy-two hours would be appropriate. The access route to and from the overnight truck site, we'd want them to only travel on highways or local truck routes. And, uh, cause we don't want, you know, massive truck traffic on inappropriate roads. The sites should be gated, um, so you have to be let in. The gates can be automatic or there can be, um, they can be manned. We don't, uh, have that specified. We have a lighting requirement, um, and this lighting requirement, I can't describe what a foot candle looks like, but for the three to one uni- uniformity ratio, that means the brightest area on the site can't be more than three times brighter than the dimmest area. And that's considered security lighting. That way you, um, don't get those really bright lights that leave very dark shadows that, you know, potentially someone could be hiding in. We did require a buffer from residentially zoned land of a thousand feet. In the past, we discussed five hundred, a thousand, fifteen hundred, we had thrown those out there. So we went with a thousand feet with no chance of buffer reduction. So that means that if you, um, you know, plant extra trees or do some sort of setback or anything like that, we still won't reduce that buffer. It's a thousand feet, period. The same for buffering from existing residential, uh, uses because there are in some industrial and commercial areas around town, um, existing homes, existing neighborhoods. And, um, there's like a manufactured home park even, that's pretty close to the existing truck stops off of three ninety-five. They would be buffered from too. So for fencing and screening, we, um, would require perimeter fencing for primary use. We have it in the code that it could be potentially waived for accessory use. And that's something that we wanna talk about later because we don't know, like, should we say, well, if you're gonna have more than sixty, sixty parking stalls for trucks, then you should have it fenced or not? Like, we, we're looking for some sort of, um, threshold where you would think, oh, it's more appropriate for it to be fenced or it's so, so big that the person that's working at the truck stop won't be able to monitor all the truck parking. Uh, and just for comparison, I think, uh, like King City and Loves, they're not fenced. I think King City's got maybe thirty spaces. And then Loves has fifty-seven spaces, just as an example of the different sizes. So. And landscaping, um, we have some landscaping requirements and screening requirements in the code right now in chapter twenty-five, one eighty. And so those would, we wouldn't change any of those requirements. It would be the same, um, uh, for any industrial use. So, um, there's things like you have to have, um, particular buffers or setbacks from particular streets, that sort of thing, but, you know, it's like ten feet. It's nothing like, uh, screening or, uh, landscaping that are in other areas like, um, parking lots. You won't have to have, um, plantings in, um, the parking aisles like you do in front of like commercial businesses. So we also want the parking surface to be hardscape, so paved parking surface. That we'd require signage on site, which would be a truck route map. So when they're leaving the site, they know where they should be sticking to. And also a twenty-four seven management phone number. So if there's something wrong with the gate, if there's something wrong at the site, it can be handled, you know, twenty-four seven. And I didn't, oh, sorry, in the, in the code, we didn't, um, specifically talk about striping. I think it's assumed that if you're gonna pave a parking lot, you're gonna stripe it. And for amenities, we're requiring trash receptacles. We're requiring permanent, single-user restrooms. So those are the restrooms where it's not, one restroom where you go in, there's like a bunch of stalls and, you know, you share the sink. It is, your restroom has its own door and it's your sink and your toilet in the restroom. Like, you see a lot of them at parks and things like that. So those are considered, um, safer. And then you also don't have to deal with having separate men's and women's restrooms of a particular number. So they'll, they're just use for anybody. And for this map, in red, you've got, it's, there are, I'm gonna say, call them approximate highways and truck routes because there are a couple little spots, like one near Sacagawea, that the whole road isn't a truck route, there's a little gap in there, but you can't see it on this map. So just FYI that this is basically, um, our approved truck routes per chapter, is it ten? Of our code. And the, you have the thousand-foot buffer shown on here, um, in black hatching. And that is just the thousand-foot buffer from residentially zoned properties. It doesn't take into account at the moment, um, existing non-conforming residential uses that are in the industrial or commercial areas. So I just wanted to give you a, a visual idea of what that, that thousand-foot buffer really looks like and where generally the truck routes are. And if you turn to the draft ordinance.
I have a question before you go to, on the table. One of the things I was wondering about, and I don't see it in the ordinance, so I was just, maybe it's addition to the table, is a question about, do we want to have a limit on the spaces or acreage for such a beast? Like, okay, no more than a hundred spaces or no more than X acres? So that's a question for, I guess, you and for, for commissioners. The other one is, should we have a facility servicing requirement that, um, cert facility? And I don't, maybe it's covered somewhere else in some other code, but, you know, restrooms, trash receptacles, other things must be serviced with every, minimum of every twenty-four hours? Cause, you know, I can imagine bathrooms not getting cleaned, pat, trash piling up because there is no such thing. But if it's covered in some other city code, that's fine. I just wanted to know if we should have it here.
Got it. You can always, um, decide that you do want it in here. I, I'm not pro that because we don't babysit other uses in that way. The idea is that, one, if you have restrooms that are unusable and there's trash, et cetera, then you are not going to be getting business, so you'd be going out of business. Also, if there is trash blowing around your site, then that is a code enforcement issue. So.
That's a fair point, yeah. No, that's, that's totally acceptable, I just was asking the question.
Oh, yeah, totally.
Yes, I have a question kind of related to, um, Mr. Cochran. The maximum stay, you said seventy-two hours. But again, keeping the site, you know, policed or, or cleaned or someone overseeing that, who, who then monitors that or makes sure that that is taking place? I'm sure the truckers wanna get in and out, I would believe that. But that can't be, y- you can't be sure of that necessarily unless you have someone monitoring it. Also, kind of going in along with that would be what Mr. Cochran said about the facility itself and keeping it, um, presentable and.
I assume that if the truckers who are paying to use it are not pleased with how clean it is, they will call that twenty-four seven management company and report issues.
So the management company is just a, on, is just by phone call, they're not local or anything like that?
Um, I have no idea if they're local, they are kind of a hypothetical, whereas in.
We, we, if, if I may interject, um, we, we do have other uses where onsite management is required twenty-four seven. I believe single-room occupancy housing, when that was enacted by both planning commission and council, it was recommended and is now codified that twenty-four seven onsite management is required. So, um, right, right now, that's not part of this proposal, but certainly if that's something that the planning commission thinks should be, uh, should belong in here, we can add that in here. But there's ver, uh, I think there's certainly uses that don't require that and uses that have requirements to include that, um, onsite twenty-four seven sort of oversight. So we're happy to take any direction from the, the commission.
Thank you for that. One last question, just with the map. How, how close do these, and I really appreciate you doing all the work in, cause this has come back looking, um, a lot better than initially when we talked about the truck habitation and where it would be and so forth. But my question is, earlier on in the year, we established some zoning, I believe, Jacob, if you can clarify that, for, um, some residential that was either kind of right in the middle of industrial or close to it. How, how close would that particular area be to this?
The way the code is currently proposed.
It's not TeraVita, but the other one, the gentleman that came up from, um, wasn't Brochi, wasn't Brochi, yeah. Where would that be on this map?
It, it might be a little difficult to see at, at this level of scale, but it wouldn't be too far likely, uh, north, um, northwest of the general TeraVita neighborhood. But with respect to the proposal, um, the proposed use would be, uh, would need to be a, a minimum of one thousand feet. Uh would need to be a a minimum of one thousand feet away from any existing or uh zoned residential use.
Oh, sorry, residential and mixed use, sorry, forgot about that.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions as well, um. What if on signage, we also add on um Pasco's, the Pasco's code enforcement uh number along with the health district, I think of. Um the individuals using this facility are are transient, they're they're coming and they're going, and so to be able to partner with them to um help. Us, help them, that I think would be wonderful. Um second question or statement, nope, this was a question, yeah. Um for the maximum stays at seventy two hours, um is that just for the primary and or accessory? So which use is it or is it for both?
It would apply to both.
Thank you, and then do you have any recommendations on um amount of acreage? Cause that was a really good question that um Chair Cochrane had um for um. For these kind of facilities, these kind of uses.
I I don't think that personally that I would put a minimum or maximum size. Because that, I mean, if you look at the other industrial uses around, I mean, some of them are acres and acres and acres of. Of, you know, heavy industrial use, so having it in the industrial area, I don't think. There's going to be any kind of impact that should be controlled via size. Um I feel like the size would be um limited pretty much by the market. So if somebody wanted to just have fifteen truck parking spots on, cause they have a small piece of property. Like, I think that's great, if um other people wanna have three hundred. I don't see that as a problem. And um so the other um big rig sites that um were linked to your staff reports. In May, those, I think they were two to three hundred. Parking spots for each of those, so um if. You wanted to look at, if you you could just seriously Google big rig truck parking in Tennessee. They've got videos and um photos of their their sites. And they're next to Loves Truck Stop, so that way you can kind of get in like a more visual impact of. And it says the the size of their um properties in acreage and in number of truck parking sites. So that way you can kinda get a feel for what that many sites might actually look like.
So. The um. The idea of limiting the size of these things, I think is somewhat uh a moving target. I think there's. Uh you you'll find in the the economics of the development that. There'll be a certain number of trucks required and and a certain amount of uses required. In order for an overnight trucking facility to be vi- viable and successful economically. And so I'm not sure how you're gonna, uh I'm not sure you wanna limit limit the size of them, I think it's what's more important is. How how the area, how how the the allotted area, the site for the for this facility. Is designed to handle the trucks. Uh both in terms of ingress and egress and and the and the the ease of movement and. You know, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I I I might, I might suggest that you, you know, I think one thing you might do, and perhaps you've already done this. I'm sure the trucking industry has got volumes on how these things wanna be designed. And all those suggestions associated with um overnight trucking, trucking and parking and facilities and stuff like that. I'm assuming you have done some research on on that, uh and 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 would really encourage you to do that. There's no sense in trying to reinvent the wheel, if you will. I mean, there's a lot of information out there that could be applied to how these sites are 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 developed. Anyway, thank you.
Okay, so I got a few questions. I'll ask the first one since this this slide is up, so the. The way I see that map and correct me if I'm wrong. That excludes the current project proposal, correct? Or does it, does it fall into there where he can build his thing where he wants to?
No, it excludes the current proposal by the applicant um for two reasons. One, the property that started this um, the impetus for this amendment uh is zone C three. And the second is that it is not on a truck route.
Yeah, okay, so and then can you go back a slide? I'm sorry, did I interrupt you?
Oh, okay, I apologize.
Yeah, we we can always, this is a workshop, so we can come back, the idea is to come back uh and address planning commission. Uh comments and recommendations to refine the proposal, and we can certainly double check um. Everything that's been assured with the commission and the public this evening.
Okay, can we go back a slide? Maybe two, I don't know, let's get that one. Get that one. So, a couple of things I have here, the cop in me is gonna come out. I I just see people taking advantage of situations, okay, so under gate, uh wherever the gate was. I think you might wanna put in there that it it works. Because they can have a gate open and not use it, and then what's the use of the gate? Right, so if it's just propped open or whatever, a working gate, lockable or something, a lockable gate, I think that just needs to be added in there. The maximum stay seventy two hours. Is that a maximum stay seventy two hours in what time period? So if a truck goes in there and stays seventy two hours and he really wants to stay a week, can he drive around the block and go back in? Cause he came back in, so now he can do another seventy two? Seventy two hours in a week, so you know, I there, that needs to be a little more clarified because somebody's gonna take advantage of it. And if you're gonna put it in there, let's clean it up and make it precise. Landscaping, I disagree with what you said about landscaping. Um I think you need to put something in there specific for this. Because you're talking about people staying overnight, you're not talking about a warehouse. Whatever you have in the code for warehouse, great. You're talking about people overnight, you're talking about people that are gonna come with dogs, cats, who knows what kinda animals they they're living with. And they're gonna be doing their business everywhere if you don't put in there, and like like the proposal said, I mean, and to his hit to his um. The accolades to him, he, they actually planned all that, they had the the green space with the the dog area or cat area, whatever. That needs to be specific and different for this type of a project, not what you already have in the code. It needs more.
So that is one of the amenity questions. So um that we, that I would like your input on, like. So, yeah, what is a like a pet relief space, like how big is it? Does it need to be fenced or is it okay if it's just open grass? So those are among the questions that I have. Of what's, you know, basically considered an amenity, the additional features. So, cause I couldn't come up with.
There is one.
Well, we have, would have to have something calculable, so and since I couldn't come up with it, that's why I just threw it under discretion of community and economic development, so that is uh.
Yeah, I think I um. Part of the challenge with leaving things as discretionary decisions is they're discretionary, and so with um. Projects and designs and developments changing on a annual basis, um you you, how do you remain consistent? Uh for an applicant, right, so there's always a a consistent process and reliable um uh process of sorts. Landscaping and amenities certainly are are two things that we would consider different aspects of any potential projects, particularly related to a use like this. Um landscaping and setback related to um what's along the periphery of the project versus an amenity um object such as um. Uh green space, uh minimum green space, um. Clubhouse of so sorts, the idea is to um gather uh gather a little bit more information from the planning commission to sort of what direction you want to see. Uh this proposal go, so if we're looking for sort of a bare bones approach, you would wanna relax. Um uh the potential regulations, if you're looking for more substantial development where you would see. Increased setbacks, fencing, green space or uh zero escaping. Uh green space for recreational uses. Um those are the kind of things that we would, uh it would help us, so we can come back in in August with a more refined amendment for. Consideration of the planning commission.
Okay, I'm ignorant, what's zero escaping?
Yeah, water uh ri- oh gosh, um more drought tolerant landscaping, so yeah.
Local stuff.
Yeah, succulents and whatnot, yeah.
Not my yard, but everywhere.
Yeah, I had it.
Oh, see, I'm sorry.
Yes, I want to thank Jacob for that, because that, I think with a project of like this size, it's new to the community, it's something that. Really, I mean, these trucks are large, that I think um Commissioner Hitler talked to the. Fact that he was familiar with with this kinda project and it requires big turn radiuses and stuff. There ha- I think having a least restrictive, just kind of do your own thing is 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 not a good idea for Pasco. Um I do see on the staff action information um when you were uh contacting Washita. Um that they didn't have any model ordinances um drafted for this kind of habitation. Nor do the consultants know of any existing ordinance existing outside of Washington state. Then it goes on to say um something about freight based land use management provided within North Hampton County, which is in Pennsylvania. Well, that's good, and City of Redmond, and you have to have something to kind of, you know, to compare to understand, but this is City of Pasco and we're different. And I think um what Jacob said about a little more clearer um definition on some of these. What I consider kinda major points would be good for us to know, thank you.
If if I could add to, I think with any new um uh additional use added to the municipal code. There's, there's never going to be kind of a perfect amendment. We wish that was the case all the time, but oftentimes that's not the case, so staff certainly, um wherever this ends up. Staff certainly will be able to come back to both planning commission and eventually city council with, you know, a six month or a one year check, and or maybe we'll wait until we. See these uh mature or uh uh projects apply and see how they uh end up being developed. And we can come back with um sort of a status report. Of of this new use added to the code, uh additionally, if you wanna see certain things that you wanna have measured. We can certainly add that into the proposal as well, if that's something that the planning commission think would be um okay. One thing I do wanna address is that um if, just because it's not on here, doesn't mean it won't be addressed as well. And particularly related to projects that are large that trigger a state environmental policy act, right? So there will be, um if you have a certain number of trips, there will likely be a potential uh need to study. Noise mitigations and light pollution, et cetera, so just because it's not on here. Does not mean it won't necessarily be addressed via other regulations or state requirements the city is required to uh comply with.
Yes, um. I'm probably gonna repeat myself, but um, so I I would, I I I find this just kinda scratching the surface. And um I would, again, repeating myself, I would encour- encourage. Uh loo- uh researching um other cities and their requirements for overnight trucking facilities. And and certainly the trucking industry will have a a a big uh list of of. Things that would be very important to um to what we're trying to do here, so. Anyway, FYI.
No, we we appreciate that feedback and we'll follow up with the planning commission in August, it it sounds like there's some more work to do. Um and happy to uh continue the conversation, obviously, this evening, but. Uh certainly sounds like there's some work to do on this amendment, and we we can definitely come back uh with a refined proposal for the commission uh in August.
Yeah, I think one thing um that I would add that I didn't see on here, maybe it's covered in a different code. As well as like um providing um a source of drinking water. That's, I guess, potable water for people and um. The other thing I was gonna say is, is there um, do we have maybe something that we can rely on? That or we can take like kind of a best practice from like what, you know, regulations or um or minimum requirements for like RV parking? Um because I kinda see this as kind of something similar, but you know, obviously the scale and the size of the of the vehicles are gonna be different, but. Similar kind of situation, right, where people are spending a temporary amount of time in a in a space and. So maybe we could take kind of some of the best practices from um regulations from for, you know, places like that, that would be helpful.
No, it's a great suggestion, yeah.
Okay, so I have a few things to say, um thank you for the clarification far as about um. Uh primary use versus accessory for the maximum stay, question I would have is how um you go about regulating it. Just another question I have um for the fencing and screening, I would like to see fencing for the accessory. Uh use as well as, of course, the primary use. And then. Jacob, you had mentioned that when you have like a certain amount of lighting and what is the environmental impact? Does that include with like parking service, surface, so if you end up having acres upon acres of these trucks leaking oil, like how how does? At what point does it trigger an environmental impact statement?
Yeah, EISs are, um we would have to identify that early on in a project proposal. And then it would then go through a significant scoping process with various um uh stakeholders involved and likely the. Uh public agencies as well, I think we can certainly work with Benfica Health District and make sure we're coordinating with all applicable agencies, but in EIS. I I would assume in the EIS being required for a use like this, it would have to be a significantly large. A very, very large project, particularly including uh with the with respects to that. Um the proposal has evolved from being a potential use in both commercial and industrial uses. To now being a proposal that um is solely in industrial uses, industrial zone districts.
And looking at that map, there's great opportunity for some very large acreage to be used in this kind of facility, so. I heard you say that I'm not so worried about the largeness or the amount of acreage use, I I am concerned there, I'm concerned that when you have um. Residents driving through uh the the highway system there, and then they look over and they see uh Pasco as the. Mecca for um truck hotels. That's a concern, and so um I I disagree, I feel like there should be a limiting factor, and maybe it is. The um what's the trigger point for the environmental um impact study, I'm not quite sure. And I'll let you go ahead and then I. I I did a good job being patient, huh? Okay, um for signage, um if we can go ahead. Oh, yeah, I did already say that about adding on the um code enforcement number in health district. For amenities, would the code enforcement be um the ones that would be called and checked in on that? For trash receptacles and and on down the list, and then finally, I would be very interested in seeing uh landscaping added. Much to the similar um as a few years ago, we passed um new code language for um. Storage units, yes, and we had it with fencing as well as the facades and things like that. I'm kinda thinking about that as well as the um community uh appearance. And that is all.
So this is, I mean, I think it's also, it sounds like it's difficult because I don't think there is a lot of basis. It seems like there isn't a lot of go before us on this, and so, but I think the the suggestion to look at other sources like RV parks. Rest areas, these kinds of things that are similar use uses, um I tend to agree with the size limits, although. My challenge is is that I don't like to overregulate it, I like the market to decide, and so some of these things I want. If somebody doesn't take their trash out, I want them to go out of business, but then we have a big eyesore of an empty. Lot, at the same time, I also don't want Wyoming's Little America in North Pasco, right? And so, uh if you've ever been through Wyoming and Little America, it's this massive city in the desert that's all trucks, right? And so we don't really want that, and so I think there's. And so I think there's just so much complexity here. And I don't, I, I don't know that there is a lot of precedent and resources available, so. But I, maybe our, our suggestions and just if staff can look at other similar kinds of things. I mean, if some, like a, I don't know, if a truck stop or if a rest area has pet areas, well, maybe we use the similar criteria that somebody is using for a pet area in that use, even though it has nothing to do with this, or it's just a, it just seems like it's hard. And I, I, I respect that for staff, this is difficult because um, we have what people want to propose and do. And um, it doesn't sound like in your research, there are other cities that have a lot of this figured out, so.
Yeah, there aren't a lot um, that are written regulations. These tend to be handled as um, conditional use permits. And um, uh, you know, that kind of thing. So it's not that they have any kind of reg- regulation. It is, it's an unlisted use, so you have to meet these, these, you know, six or whatever, conditional use like uh, regulations. You have to see how your impact is, and that's how they do it. So that means kind of every project could potentially stand on their own. The ones that um, I've seen, they don't um, how, like, some of the um, the gated fenced fancy new um, truck parking, some of them don't even have restrooms. They look very nice, but they don't have any restrooms because they assume that since they're right next to a Loves, that everyone's gonna go eat, shower, and use the restroom at a Loves. Like, they were strategically placed that way. Um, there's one that, I mean, it's brand new, it's lovely. The only amenity they provide is garbage cans. And, and they've got um, security cameras, the whole thing is lit. Um, they, their cameras look at the driver and they do license plate recognition. But it's not an RV park because the idea is that you are, these truckers have to stop. They are required by law to have brakes, um, long ones, intro ones. Uh, and so they need a safe place to do their after-hours. I mean, yes, amenities are nice, but if you don't have these truck stop areas, then they are parking in areas that could be potentially dangerous for the driver. They could be robbed, they could be killed. They could be parking in a place that um, is uh, like, have you seen them, the trucks pull over on like, on and off ramps? Like, it's kind of a traditional thing to do. That is dangerous for the trucks. It's dangerous for the drivers that are passing them on these ramps. Like, it's not a good idea for anybody. And we all take advantage of, I don't want to be like Amazon Prime, but we can't like, take advantage of what freight gives us and then be like, but not in our community, you know? So, and just like Jacob said, we can put regulations in place. And if there's a feedback loop here, like, this isn't like carved in stone, we can come back and be like, hey, it's not working.
Yeah, I think that, that's important to, to emphasize is, is that staff certainly can come back. And I think we can take advantage of, of the special permit process too, to accommodate large potential projects, right? So if an example is anything over the random number of twenty acres that requires a special permit, then we can pursue that. And we can kind of bring back some ideas based on uh, similar like uses um, and do some additional research into other communities and then come back to the planning commission uh, next month.
Excellent, thank you. Well, I, I do appreciate all the work. I mean, this is kind of like we're carving new territory here for us, so um, I know it's hard, so.
You are, and Washtat even like, was very excited that Pasco is, you know, on the front line.
Let somebody else make the mistakes.
And you were complimented by the municipal um, research service center. They were like, oh, I'm so excited to be researching this for you because no one's asked me that, you know? So, I mean, it, it might sound silly, but it actually is super important um, that we're, we're codifying this.
Did you want, I, I know that um, you were gonna come back, but you also had mentioned you wanted our feedback on the definition itself. Is there, anybody have any specific, it's on page, or I don't know what it is, where the ordinance starts, um, after the table in your notes. It's the page after notes and it says, uh, it's defined in the definition. So if you have any feedback on the definition, this would probably be a great place for, to give that to staff. Or if it's great. Anyone?
I, maybe possibly after, um, where said driver can sleep in their vehicle with available amenities.
I had the same. I wrote down, um, and access or utilize provided amenities. So we're on the same page there. I don't know if it's needed, but I thought it should say something about amenities. Anyone else have feedback on the definition?
I'd just say bathrooms are very important. I think they have to be there. I've searched, I don't know how many hundreds or thousands of trucks, and they're always got their own um, waste receptacles inside the cabs. And so they're gonna go somewhere when they stop.
Yeah, the briefcase toilets.
You mean to offload it?
I, no, I'm talking about urine and feces in the cab. But yeah, they're gonna dump it somewhere. So if we don't have bathrooms in, it's gonna be on the side of our street.
Yep, so, and bat, permanent restrooms are uh, required in this draft ordinance. And it even says how many restroom, minimum restrooms per stall.
I'm just, um, I've, I've worked on these things for years. And I know there's a lot of rules and regulations and a lot of suggested guidelines for dealing with these overnight trucking facilities. So I'm just encouraging you, don't, don't be afraid to dig in and find this stuff because it's there. It's, 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 it's the service guidelines.
Do you have, uh, do you have any pointers for stuff that you might be able to send offline?
Well, I, I, I could do what I think they, they, they could do. I could research it, but I know it's out there.
Okay.
And, you know, and the National Truckers Institute, or I can't remember.
Gotcha.
Yep, and we, we appreciate that. We'll, we'll do some additional research, Commissioner. I, I think we can um, come back uh, with some guidance based on what we're, we're seeing elsewhere and other guidance.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to be helpful and, and suggest, so.
Um, well, I want to say a thank you to Ms. Ballard for this fantastic format. Having this kind of layout like that gave us room to be able to write in notes, but as well as like, it was really um, compartmentalized to help break down this like huge task of trying to be able to codify this. So thank you very much for um, the format and all the research you've done. And imagine it can be kind of overwhelming hearing all of our details of input and you do a fantastic job of taking that in, so thank you.
I just have one correction um, to make. You had asked a question about the applicant's property and whether or not this um, would not fit in, uh, they would not be approvable. I said they weren't on a truck route. That was a mistake. And it's that they're within a thousand feet of existing residential. Sorry, so.
That's helpful, thank you. Well, any other comments? I know that we may feel like we beat the dead horse on this one, but um, it's great, great feedback and it's a tough challenge, so. Will come back with a workshop next month again, or probably a good idea?
Yeah, yeah, I think, um, I think where we're at right now, we'll, we'll start with the workshop and I think we'll have a better idea in a couple of weeks if it might be ready for a public hearing. But certainly we'll be back in August with an update for the commission.
Excellent, thank you very much. Um, with that, we are done with our workshop. I don't think we have other business unless it was something you wanted to bring up.
We, we do, and I feel awkward doing it this way. But, so I apologize for my absence last month, but I do want to take a moment to introduce two new staff members. One who you've heard from quite a bit already, um, to uh, two new staff members to the Community and Economic Development Department. And first is formally introduce our new senior planner, Jennifer Ballard. Uh, Jennifer has got uh, great experience from across various parts of the country and, and here in the state of Washington. And uh, we'll be working on a variety of major planning efforts, particularly as we embark on our next iteration of our major comprehensive plan. And uh, we uh, welcome Jennifer to the team. And uh, I also want to take the time to introduce our new deputy director of Community and Economic Development, Craig Raymond. Uh, Craig uh, brings a wealth of experience and diverse perspective uh, to the CED team and will be uh, charged with assisting with the oversight and of operations and functions, functions of each of the divisions, planning, inspection services, development services, planning, I'm sorry, and, and community development block rent. And um, wanted to take a quick moment to introduce both of these two new teammates, um, a welcome addition to the City of Pasco and certainly will be in front of uh, the planning commission for a very long time.
Thank you, welcome. Welcome to the commission, from the commission. All right, anything else? No other introductions, okay. Well, it's great to have you both. All right, hearing that, um, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, we're adjourned at eight ten PM. Thank you.